Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session for Monday, November 9th, 2020. We are here at the Ed Center socially distanced. We will keep our masks on when we're not speaking. But we have an agenda. It's fairly lengthy one this today. If we've all had an opportunity to read that, if you would, I could use a motion and a second to approve our agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Grimsley, second by Ms. Blackwell. Any further discussion on our agenda? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. All right, agenda's been set, and we're going to move right along into the report section. And 3.01 is a Career Development Month, and we have Mr. Rusty Parker here tonight to give us a little bit of an update. Welcome, Mr. Parker. You got to turn on your mic? Yeah, you can take off the mask, but you might want to turn on your mic.
Can everybody hear me okay? This is Unique. Good to see you this evening. Dan, you got my presentation up there? Go ahead and go to the next slide, and I'll jump in. I present to the board a couple times a year, and November's one of those. Usually February is CTE Month, where we recognize all of our CTE programs. But November is always the month where we recognize career development specifically. So the National Career Development Association actually designates November as Career Development Month. And November the 18th is actually CDC or Career Development Day. So what I want to do is talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we do as far as career development in Cabarrus County, but then also to speak about a new initiative that we're going to be starting this month called the Career Continuum. What I've got on the board is some of the things that we do for career development is we really promote career interest inventories or surveys. The career development coordinators or CTE coordinators that we have at the school, this is their number one responsibility, is to help students find their career direction. And the way to do that is usually through a career assessment. We also have guest speakers and site visits, and up until this year, we actually had the Career Connections Day, what we call the C4 Day at the Cabarrus Arena. But we didn't get to have that this past March. But that is also the biggest career event that we do all year long to promote career development. Dan? To introduce the new process for our district, I want to ask everybody a question. What do you want to be when you grow up? It's funny, but adults are still trying to figure this out. I asked my daughter this question the other day, and I thought about whether I should say this or not, but she said she wanted to be a mattress tester. And I was like, what is a mattress tester? She said, I get a layer on sleep all day. And I'm like, no, you need a Plan B. So we need a Plan B. But what's sad is a lot of adults think that, but still, they don't find their career direction till really later in life. So our goal in the county is actually to help students find their career direction before they graduate. If they can find their career direction, they will find what they're supposed to do in life. They'll go to college, they'll go to a community college, they'll find their way once they find their career direction and what their purpose is for being here. Dan? What I want to show you just a little bit is our CTE Vision and Mission Statement. Everything that we do is student focused. Our vision statement says, "Students prepared to pursue their direction and purpose." And that goes right along with the process that I'm going to show you today. And then our mission statement is broken into three parts. We want to inspire students, and that's first of all, the number one thing that we want to do. But the second thing is help them create their future and find out where they're going when they leave us. It's not about staying here, getting just to the next grade level. It's about where do they go when they leave Cabarrus County? And then the third piece of the mission statement is focused on Cabarrus County in general, and we want to also be a support to our community, and that's the focus of what we do. The bottom bullet about purpose statement is, really goes along with what we're doing today, is to make every student career in college ready. And like I said earlier, if they find their career direction, then they will find their purpose, and they will be ready. There are challenges along the way. How many people, if you just think for a second, you don't have to raise your hand, but how many of you knew exactly what you wanted to do when you graduated from high school? I've met people that knew exactly what they wanted to do. My sister was that way. She went into the medical field, knew exactly what she wanted to do. I was the opposite, which is probably how I ended up as a CTE Director, because I get to spend my job helping other people find their career direction, because I know what it feels like when you don't have your career direction. But there are challenges that every child faces. Some of it is, what I've got on the board is, one thing is their parents, is a lot of parents don't really know what to guide, or how to guide their children in their right career direction. They may know what they do on their job and some of their family members, but it's very hard to expand on that when, and when they may not know what careers are available. The bottom bullet is actually about helping them develop consistent processes. Right now, our process is that the CDC's actually used whatever product they can find to do a career interest inventory. And so we don't want to do that. That's a challenge, because again, the data's scattered, and we really don't know how to use that data to help somebody. So again, the goal for today, and what I'm going to show you, is to create consistent data, which is the third bullet up there. Also, to provide something for parents so that they can actually see what to do and help children. But also for the students themselves, so they can discover themselves. What we're going to talk about is the Cabarrus County Schools Career Continuum, and it's broken into three parts. It's, there's an elementary, a middle, and a high school piece. It started out as a high school discussion, really as a product for high school students, but it's been expanded all the way to fifth grade. Career and technical education supports students all the way through the fifth grade. It used to be just middle school, but now we support students as low as fifth grade. But the bottom bullet up there, every student will graduate from Cabarrus County Schools with a career direction. That is the goal of the process. Let's talk about fifth grade. Fifth grade is about career discovery. It's a time to discover what jobs are available, what does work mean, what is that all about? If you think you're going to be a mattress tester, you probably need a Plan B. So that's, they don't, a lot of kids really don't know what work is. They maybe never even earned an allowance. So our focus at fifth grade is to really teach them what work's all about. Learning about careers, learning about industries, and then hopefully at a fifth grade levels also take their first career interest inventory, where they can learn about what they match up to, or what they might match. But the goal is to begin career development processes as early as possible. I hear this from a lot of people that work in elementary schools, specifically my wife, who's a second grade teacher. She tells me all the time, we need to talk careers from a much younger age. Talk about it from the time they're as young as possible, so they're thinking about what they want to do when they grow up, or what they want to be when they grow up, but also how they can get there, and what are the options that make that a reality. Let's go into the middle school piece. Middle school is a time of self-discovery. So what I've got up here is a career awareness initiative. Middle school is really the time for students to understand themselves and find out really, how do, what do I do when I get to high school? What program do I want to be in? What CTE pathway? Do I want to go into an arts pathway? What do I do when I get to the next level? So middle school is really about career awareness. This is when we talk about career pathways, we talk about career clusters, the USDOE clusters, that's a big piece of it. But also, we talk about soft skills and professional skills, and start trying to teach students what it means to, or how you act on a job. What do you, how do you look somebody in the eye? How do you shake somebody's hand firmly? Those types of things, and learning what soft skills are all about. And that really starts in middle school. But the bottom bullet that I had up there is really what I wanted to focus on for this slide. And that is to use the data that we receive from the career interest inventories to help plan for registration, to also help plan and be proactively looking at how to develop our advisory, our academy programs, and our program choice, for that matter. That the whole process should be run proactively, looking at what students can actually, what interests they actually have, not just asking them, what do you want to be when you grow up? The high school piece, again, is where this process started, but it's all about developing a four-year plan. Once they've spent the time in middle school, learning about themselves and learning about careers, then the high school piece should be where they have their four-year plan, and they're working in that direction. So a big piece is developing a quality four-year plan, and knowing what courses they'll offer. And parents will have access to this data, so they can help their children, and know exactly what program they're going to be involved in. This is where they create resumes. Again, we talk about soft skills, but this is also where they start learning about work-based learning opportunities, and where they can go out into the community and actually find an internship, or a job shadowing opportunity, or even possibly an apprenticeship program. This is where they also learn about financial responsibilities. I don't, I think we'd be doing a disservice, and I know the state's changing the policy with personal finance and how that's all taught, but we would be doing a disservice if we didn't teach them something about personal finances and how they actually manage their own money. So that's a piece of what we're talking about today. What I want to show you was the implementation plan and kind of what it would look like as it rolls out. We presented this to principals a couple of weeks ago, and I printed, presented to school counselors and also my CTE staff. And the goal with this is to give them some type of guide to create an implementation team at the school level. So that implementation team could be counselors, it could be teachers, it could be APs, anybody that really has an interest in career development could be on this team. But looking at how they implement the required pieces, and as many as possible of the recommended pieces, because some are required and some are recommended. So the plan with this is to actually give principals a document, so that they can go and develop their implementation team, and then look at how to roll this product out. I want to end with this. I've met people a few months ago, a friend of mine told me that his wife had come through a bachelor's program in health sciences and was wanting to be a nurse, and then once she got through the whole program, she decided that's not what she wanted to do. And I was thinking, woo, she's in her 30s, that's tough. To get that far along in your career, and then make a total switch and a total turnaround, something was wrong somewhere. Either she didn't really know what she was getting into, there was something wrong. Our goal is to not have any child from our school district ever walk out with that experience, so that when they leave our school system, they know their purpose in life, they know their career direction, they know where they're going, and they are career-ready when they walk out the door. This is actually not a CTE initiative. I'm the CTE Director, and I get to talk about this, but this is actually an initiative for every single child in our school system. So this process that we're talking about is not just for the CTE kids, it's for every child. The kids that are going off to a four-year college, they still need to have a career direction, so that they don't get all the way through a four-year bachelor's degree, and then think, oh, I don't want to do this. We need to help them make good decisions, and that's what this process is all about. So I want to show you this for Career Development Month, and say happy Career Development Month, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Do you have any questions from this part? Very exciting stuff. Thank you very much.
I do.
Oh, we do have a question down here? Sorry?
I was trying to, I guess I've got to be really quiet. Rusty, I laud you for trying to look into the future and help these, help these students plan for, you know, undefined future, you know, and to give them some kind of structure. But I think it's kind of, I know when I was coming up, trying to plan for my entire life and trying to rest on one thing. One, you know, guidance that I've given to students is that, look at the first six work years and plan for those first six, but don't think that you're trapped into one thing for the rest of your life, kind of like that nurse story that you gave us. She got through the nursing school and realized, oh my gosh. But she was 30 years old, so I don't know how long she was in school, or how many-
That was her second trip to college, I think. There was multiple degrees involved.
Right, okay. So the, you know, the first thing is to pick up, you know, to me, college and the way when they graduate from high school, and if they go to a two-year school, it gives, it gets them prepared for the first initial years and the work years, but you know, after about six or seven, people are probably ready for a change anyway. And when you look at the statistics on how people change jobs, this is another thing that you probably prepare them for, is you'll probably change your job after six years. I mean, most people don't stay in a job more than four or five, and they've moved on to something slightly different, and they pick up new skills as they go, but these base skills help them form the base of where they would focus their energies for their, for a lot of their life. So I just would be, I would caution the staff and the way you prepare students for the future, not to think that they're making a choice for, when they're 65, they're still going to be doing this thing, but making a choice that your life will morph in front of you, you will make changes in your direction as you go forward, and prepare them to think that life will change, and I will make changes. Does that make sense?
It does. And really, that's one piece of the process, is to have them discover themselves and always be looking at themselves and making themselves marketable. I think if we can ever teach children how to do that one thing, is to always be marketing yourself and developing yourself, and to be a continuous learner, don't ever stop learning. Those types of pieces in this process hopefully will alleviate some of that, that there will be changes, we all have that. But I think if they could learn that the, they are the product, they got to learn how to sell themselves and do that type of thing, then they'll be a step ahead of a lot.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.
All right, we're going to move on to 3.02, which is a department spotlight. And tonight, we have the School Social Work and Mental Health Services, and Ms. Amy Jewell is going to join us. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Amy Jewell. I'm the coordinator for School Social Work and Mental Health Services with the school district, and I hope to give you an overview of what that looks like right now, looking at school social work over time, during COVID, of course, and what mental health services look like throughout the county. So first, it's important to understand where social workers fit in the school district. They are a part of our specialized instructional support personnel teams. And so we work really closely in this district with our counselors and school psychologists, SRO and nurses, to wrap around children and families. And this model is really important, because every discipline up there comes to the table with their unique lens, to really look at students and families and how they can best be served by that profession. And where we all overlap is that mental health service delivery. So we all are trained to provide different mental health services and supports for our For the purpose of today, we're going to talk a little bit more about school social When I started with Cabarrus County Schools in September of 2013, there were 12 school social workers. And today, we have 27 school social workers throughout the district, which is pretty amazing. Just to give a little perspective, our national recommendation for our ratios would be one school social worker to every 250 students. The average right now for North Carolina is one school social worker to about 1,400 students. And so we're doing better than the state average, for sure, at about one social worker to every 1,200 students. So a long way to go, but we've come so far, and we're really, really proud of that, and to see what more school social workers can do for this district. A very large part of our role is to address barriers to attendance. We all know that when kids don't show up at school, that there's a lot of other stuff going on. And so a lot of the work that we do in the building addresses that really hard stuff that children or families are dealing with outside of the building. So we address issues like child abuse and neglect, domestic violence, mental health issues, homelessness. We work really closely with our homeless students and families, different at-risk variables, and of course, absenteeism is a major thing that we address here. And so knowing that we want the students in the building to be able to better serve them, it's really our responsibility to do everything that we can to bring them back to us. And so when we first meet students and families, our social workers are doing a strength-based assessment with them. So what's working really well for you? How can we enhance that and grow those really great protective factors that you have? And what are the needs of your family? How can we, as social workers, provide support and intervention that will make education more accessible to your students and your families? We provide direct services, and that can look like counseling, different groups at schools, and certainly crisis interventions. We provide different consultation for teachers. So if we know of situations or hardships for families and students outside of school, part of our role is to provide some education and support to teachers, so they can better support those students in the classroom. So we teach them strategies for classroom management and de-escalation, and just how we can better support our students with significant needs while they're in the building. We have a lot of different programs. We work closely, again, with those full CISP teams to run programs like substance prevention, substance use prevention. We have a pretty established truancy program in the district. We have different parenting classes that we offer through Triple P, and of course, that program evaluation to see, did these programs work? How many students can we reach, and how can we do better next time? And then also, if we are truly providing families with the tools that they need to be successful, and we're teaching students while they're with us, then there's an accountability piece of that, too. So when we provide services, it's not just a one-and-done. We're following up with families, or we're making sure that those interventions and those supports that we're providing are working, because if they're not, then we've got to do better, and we've got to try something else. So really, really important, when we have our students, when we can get them, when we're working with families, we've got to make sure those basic needs are met. We've got to make sure that there is food in the bellies, right, so they can focus. We've got to make sure that we're providing different levels of support and checking in with our kids. We of course have to address the mental health needs of our students, because we know that if they are coming to school and they have fear or anxiety, that they're not focused in the classroom. So what can we do to make sure that those needs, those feelings are alleviated, and kids feel safe at school? And we deliver a lot of meaningful staff training. And so we've got a laundry list we can talk about, but really, we do a lot of trauma-informed training, not only for CISP, but for administrators and for teachers, about different strategies, different crisis models, so that we're all on the same page, and that we're working with students in a wraparound, in a holistic type of way. And when our CISP and our social workers are working with students, and we recognize, hey, we've been working to address some of these mental health symptoms for a while, and it seems like maybe those needs are more than what we can address in the school, we have some enhanced services through our partners in the community. So we have school-based mental health therapy as well, and so what that looks like is we have 15 different provider agencies in Cabarrus County that we have agreements with. And through very strict guidelines, we can invite those therapists to come into the building to work directly with our students, with parent permission, and with coordinating with the principal, and of course, with our CISP members. We can actually provide an enhanced level of services within the school district. A really great thing that we have in these community partners is that we can reach more students. So for example, for every 10 students they see across Cabarrus County that they can bill for, they're providing pro bono services to our students who are uninsured or underinsured. So they're serving kids who otherwise would not be able to have access to therapy. And of course, our providers that come in, they help educate our staff as well, and help us understand how we can better support our students in school. And then one additional level of service we have is our day treatment programs. We have one at elementary, elementary school, and one at middle school. And these programs are really important, because they provide a very high level of need, where our students are in treatment and getting their education all throughout the school day. And so to have those partnerships here in our buildings, where kids can stay within the school district, is pretty wonderful. So we're grateful for those programs. So we talked a little bit about what that looks like within the school district, but I think it's pretty great to know that this model that we have here, our CISP model and our school-based mental health model, is actually being used as an example throughout the state. So we were invited to present our model at the Governor's Commission on Access to Basic and Sound Basic Education, and then a similar model about the teaming structure and growing our teams at the North Carolina School Mental Health Initiative. And then we also entered last year a trauma-informed grant, a partnership. So Cabarrus County Schools is now recognized as a trauma-informed school district through North Carolina Department and Health and Human Services Trauma-Informed Community Grant, which is pretty wonderful. So we've been doing this work, and now we have more support to get this trauma-informed care and this mental health model to more staff and community partners who are all working with our students. So what does this look like? What does this model look like during COVID? So, you know, to use the term, once March hit, right, this is unprecedented. How do we serve our students? And for social workers, I am very proud. I am very proud of our team, because this is where we thrive. This is where we make sure that those connections with families are not lost. When my phone was ringing off the hook, it was not, oh my goodness, what do we do? It was, how can I help? I've got to get this home visit. How do we get the hotspot there? I'm going to deliver this Chromebook. We are going to publicize our mill site. So really, the social workers were making sure that just because students and families were home, that we did not lose that homeschool and community connection. So we worked really closely with Food and Nutrition, and with our Technology Department to make sure that, no matter what the circumstances, our children and families felt connected to the school and have the support that they needed. And the direct services looked a little bit different, too. So you see, we've created sort of these virtual classrooms, where students can come check in with their social workers for some support. We have our mental health team meetings with our administrators, all through Teams, but we're still staffing those cases, we're still wrapping around kids. We've created different pages online to make sure that there are no barriers where families cannot access us and get the information that they need to feel successful here. Here's just a snapshot of some of the different task forces that our social workers or myself are assigned to in the county. And it's really important, because these are initiatives, these are visions for Cabarrus County, and so to have our social workers at the table to bring the information, and also help in decision-making and bring the information back, so there's no gap in communication. So we really appreciate these partnerships, these task forces that we get to be a part of, to, you know, keep improving, keep progressing. And then, again, just a snapshot of some of our daily community partners. So right now, it's a really big holiday assistance time for our social workers, so they're collaborating with all these different community partners who want to help, to want to make sure that, again, people have what they need, especially during this time. And always throughout the year, during COVID, not during COVID, whatever it looks like, people are always willing to partner with our social workers, to get resources to the families, to wrap around kids, and that's what it's all about. So we're just really grateful for that. And our social workers, right, so they're that school link to home, but also into the community. So the more we can be out there, the more we can be learning the resources ourself, the more we're going to be able to wrap around and support our kids. So like I said at the beginning, we have grown tremendously, and we're really proud of this program. Ideally, right, so moving forward, I would love to see one school social worker firmly rooted at every school. That would take away that itinerant nature of sharing school, so they can work with families consistently, they can be at school all the time, they can see siblings through, and then ultimately really become embedded in that school culture, so we can partner even more closely with our CISP and get more services to families. Thank you.
Thank you for the very informative presentation. Board members, do we have any comments or questions?
I do. Thank you very much for doing that. I know that one of the things that during this COVID, that we've probably been the most concerned about is these, the children that don't have the same resources that a lot of our kids do. And so what have you seen during COVID as far as, you know, increase in mental, you know, issues that are going on with these kids, and what are we providing to them in order to be able to work through that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And I would say, since COVID, they are experiencing the same, a lot of the same stuff that we are. So heightened levels of anxiety, that fear of the unknown, but this district has a really good job of putting more services into place, knowing what's coming back into the building, and making sure that there's significant programming. So not only are we still having our providers come in and screening for any sort of mental health issues, but there's now also a robust social-emotional learning curriculum that's delivered weekly in partnership with CISP and teachers, so that we can sort of provide this base-level emotional support, and we can monitor these kids. So if I'm providing services in the class, and I see this child might need a little bit more support than what we're doing here, then I'm referring to CISP for some individual support, and then we can see if that child needs, again, an additional level. And then we start working with the families to see what other services might need to be put into place.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So from the funding standpoint for social workers to grow them, and this may be a Ms. Clutz question. Do we need to look solely at local budget contributions to grow the social worker program and the services? Or do we get some allocation from the state on occasion, based on ADM?
You might have to come out here, so we can hear you.
So there is an instructional support allocation, but that's limited. That's where your guidance, your media, your psychologist, your social workers, all of those are paid. So there's just simply, and your media specialists, there's just simply not enough funds there. I believe we should be advocating at the state level to get our percentages more in line with what the recommendations are. Unfortunately, for years, it's been mostly up to the local level, if we were going to add any. And that's how we did get some of our funding, but we absolutely are going to have to continue to advocate at the state level to get those, those numbers closer to reality.
So does the state allocate per an ADM ratio, like they do assistant principals? Or is it some other means?
It is, but it's just like every pot of money that we- It is, but it's just like every pot of money that we have, it continues to diminish over time. When the state grows and benefits grow and they don't add additional dollars in there, so it just diminishes over time.
So an important legislative priority.
It is.
Ms. Carpenter?
Is there any federal money at all in there? Or is it all just state for that?
And then there's not anything specifically directed. Our two main federal pots are Title I and EC, your O-60. And you wouldn't pay for anything out of your EC funds. Now, Title I, you could maybe hire a social worker or a psychologist, but then there's also the comparability and the supplanting issue that you want to make sure that you stay away from. That's why we don't do that. So there's really not, and only 5% of our budget's federal. We get so few federal dollars here in Cabarrus.
Of course, that was one of the things, comments I was going to make. I just attended a conference or a course, and it was basically talking about the same thing, about our need that we have for social workers. And one of the things they were talking about was the IDEA funds and how we needed to work to make sure that we did get those reallocated at full amount. But they were talking about the children with disabilities, and that was one of the things they were referring to. And I didn't know how much we, how much do we actually get in those funds? That's the Title I, correct?
So I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head, but, you know, I'm going to guess four or five million of Title I and probably three to four million of EC in the federal pots. Again, it's just not much when you look at our budget of $400 million.
That we get with those funds, but those are for that. But they basically in this, when they were talking about exactly, spot on what you were talking about and what we're seeing with COVID, with what has happened with these children. I mean, so many of the things the children are facing, the stress that has elevated during this time and what they are seeing, and the parents is elevating because of what the children are going through. It's just a vicious cycle and what stress is putting on y'all because you don't have the people to handle it. So we are seeing that. But I do appreciate everything that your staff are doing. Y'all are doing a wonderful job, and I'm very proud of our individuals that are working with y'all and what y'all do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker?
Yes, Ms. Jewell, thanks again. This is very informative. You noted that we are considered a trauma-informed school system. How many trauma-informed school systems are there in the state? I mean, are we talking 115 or are we talking just a several? Or, you know, what does that look like?
Sure. So honestly, I would have to look back at the data. I believe we were part of the third cohort to go through together. It is not in the hundreds, but I could certainly get you that number. There are a few surrounding districts who have gone through this collaborative. So we're not talking a large amount, but this Trauma-Informed Community Grant, they pick different systems to go through at the same time. So, for example, we entered the cohort with certain people from the Department of Human Services here in Cabarrus County and specific therapeutic agencies and a specific advocacy agency because they're seen as system service leaders to bring this care to the entire community.
So part of the trauma-informed district is the fact that there's this huge collaborative relationship going on between all the service providers that help mill and illness throughout the county, but mainly at the student level? Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, that's wonderful. Here's a really strong question. Where does EC connect versus mental health? And, you know, I don't really, and I know EC is out there and there's a mental health component to it, but, you know, they might be completely different things, and yet they manifest themselves in different ways. So could you kind of help us with an understanding of that?
I can touch on a small part of that. So you can certainly have significant mental health issues, and you can certainly be covered or under the EC umbrella, and they may not intersect. And so for EC, if what's going on with your mental health is impacting your ability so much that you might need specially-designed instruction, that might lead to a referral for EC. However, there's many symptoms in mental health. There's many diagnoses that could be treated outside of the classroom or sometimes not even impact school at all. And with treatment, with a proper plan and goals, people can certainly monitor those symptoms and even recover quite well, as long as they're receiving the correct care. So they might intersect, and sometimes they may not.
So does your staff help determine, but you have to augment with other agencies or professionals that know mental health better than you? I'm not saying y'all don't know mental health, so don't misunderstand that question. But, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how the process works and how the collaboration that makes us an informed community, how that helps.
Sure. So as far as the process for identifying mental health versus EC, so the social workers and all CISP, they will support the mental health, they will provide counseling, they will connect for outside services if it's appropriate. And we wouldn't necessarily do the referrals for EC, but we could help support the parent if they need to. And if a child is receiving EC services, we can help supplement some of those related services. For example, if there's counseling as a related service, that's something that CISP are qualified to do. But we wouldn't necessarily make that referral or lead that process.
And so you finally said that this CISP program that was something that was developed here and adopted by the state, is that correct?
So CISP is actually language from SS, so it is best practice from the state. But it takes a lot to really make that model happen. There's a lot of siloed work throughout the state. And so we've been working on this model for quite a few years, myself, John Basilese, who oversees the counseling program, and Amy Lauter, who oversees the school psychology program. So started building it here and think we did a pretty good job, right? There's still some gaps, but we are leading a lot of this work. So we were asked to present how we've made the model work a few times throughout the state.
And my final question is McKinney-Vento is, you know, where children are being displaced from their normal homes and having to, and that creates, I guess, a significant number of your McKinney-Vento are taken care of by your team?
Yes. So social workers are usually that first line to identify the families, and we'll do a brief McKinney-Vento assessment. And then when they're, when students are appropriately identified, we're making sure that those families are referred for whatever services they need. We connect, we have a district office liaison to make sure that things like transportation are set up, and we communicate with the administrators. So it really is the social workers on those first lines to identify and support the families, the McKinney-Vento families.
Well, final question is with children and families in this transition, do you deal with the transitional housing providers in the community? Or is that a component that also goes with part of the CISP care program?
Yes. So supporting families looking for housing, different types of housing programs, that we really rely heavily on our social workers working directly with our community partners and having those connections in the community so we can best navigate where the appropriate services or where the appropriate relief might be for families.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Harrison? Ms. Grimsley?
Yes, please. Can I ask you, please, to elaborate on the role of the SROs within this framework, please? And specifically, do we need more SROs?
So as far as our collaboration with SROs, we are extremely fortunate in this county to have such close partnerships with both the Sheriff's Department as well as CPD. And so we have an SRO assigned to, I believe, again, I'm kind of speaking loosely, but we have an SRO as part of each CISP team, so they're assigned to each school. And so, you know, of course, they have a different lens than a social worker might, but having their perspective, right, because they're out in the community, they respond to crisis differently than we do. They may know a family and their history, they have a different lens for safety. So when we're talking about mental health and services, we want to make sure that we're taking that account into perspective, of course. And so we really value our SROs here. As far as needing more, I think we can always use more CISP. But again, I think that we're just very lucky to have the collaboration and have one assigned at every school right now. It's a really big reason as to why the model works.
Ms. Grimsley?
So Amy, I know it's been a challenge for y'all since kids aren't really in school every day now, and of course, we all recognize that. But what would you say, I know when we discussed the connection between what a SRO hears from a child versus a teacher versus a nurse, and how that kind of works at school when they're actually in there. How are y'all addressing those kids not being able to speak to someone or that really not being told to some, a trusting teacher or nurse? And we've all had that discussion. So I would really like to know, is there any way to, do you survey the kids through the remote system? Or how are y'all doing to make sure that they're not falling through the cracks?
Sure. So that's an excellent question. And as a lot of our conversation in the spring is how do we catch the kids that we haven't found with home visits or in partnership? And so a lot of the schools have independently created a screener. So they're sending out surveys some to kids with like emojis about how you're feeling, and here's how you can contact your CISP, here's that virtual classroom, I'm going to be here tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., all you have to do is click and walk in, right? So as long as they have connectivity, we are reaching out constantly. If the outreach has not proven successful, we can do home visits. And also, again, that's sometimes where our SROs really step in and help us. But our social workers oftentimes lead the home visits with an SRO or an administrator or sometimes another CISP colleague. Again, we try to do that in partnership or wraparound support. And then, of course, we've got a very strong partnership with our local Child Protective Services Agency. So if we have a concern, even if we're not necessarily reporting something that has happened, they have a unit for prevention services. So it's okay to call and say, hey, we've done all of these things, we've tried and we've done the home visits, and we called the emergency contacts and we can't quite get them. Sometimes we call on them to help us partner for prevention. And so between the self-screening process, the office hours, the home visits, and also we can do different counseling sessions on demand, you know, with permission, we feel pretty good about the amount of students that we've been able to reach.
So I'm going to go just a little bit deeper into the details of that. So the screener becomes actually part of their, I guess, process during remote, I guess, they're answering some type of survey questions?
Sure. It depends on the school and the structure of how they were providing that first outreach to students. So it's usually going through CISP, some did it through teachers if that was the first point of contact. So again, some of that is school-based on how they are keeping or tracking that data.
So let's say it's a smaller child, elementary, kindergarten, first grader, how would they be screened, if you will? Since that really would have to, I mean, I don't know, are the children themselves answering the questions or are they being asked the questions? How is that for a small, I mean, a middle school or high school can answer for themselves, but how would a smaller one that maybe didn't have an advocate?
Sure. So if they are present in the classroom or the online platform at all, that teacher has access to them, of course. And our CISP are actually pushing in to do social-emotional learning lessons, so they have time just with the students, too. And they usually do those in pairs, so that if there is any awareness or red flags or just if someone recognizes a need for additional support, one of the CISP, where the teacher can pull that student aside to talk further or set up a time or follow up with the parent. So, for example, I have two school-aged children, and one of them is quite young, and his first couple of days, I don't know that he would have known how to access his CISP for support. But with a lot of support, with a lot of direction, with a lot of communication from the school, he's able to successfully navigate that now. However, at that same school, if they did not have access, right, then we're probably sending out to the home to see what other interventions can we provide and looking for any types of concern to see what kind of services that we may need to put into place. You're welcome.
Any further questions? My only question here was, are we still partnering with communities and schools?
We still have a partnership with communities and schools. It looks a little different right now as far as in the building, but yes, the partnerships, the resources are still there.
Okay. Thank you very much for giving us a briefing. We appreciate all the work that's being done.
Thank you all very much.
All right. We're going to move on to our discussion section, which is 4.01, COVID-19 update. And the board is committed to looking at data, seeing where we're at, seeing what's working, and seeing if we need to modify anything. So we're going to start that discussion if we can get an update on the numbers.
Yes, so as you guys know, we've usually tracked the health data from Thursday to Thursday, and we send that to you guys on Friday. This past Thursday, for the week, the cases were up this week to 288 new cases over the past week from Thursday to Thursday. For the past three weeks, those cases went 203 cases, 228 cases, to 288 cases. So significant increase in cases over the last three weeks and, you know, border, beginning very close to 300 a week, which is pretty much the highest average that we had. The total number of active cases in Cabarrus this week is also trending in the wrong direction. So this current week, it was, from Thursday to Thursday, was 547 active cases. Over the last three weeks, it was 423 to 468 to then 547. And I know I'm not supposed to really add other things, but I think it is important to say, so 547 on Thursday, today, there are 626 active cases in Cabarrus County, which is the highest number of active cases since the pandemic began. So that is significant, very high and trending in the wrong direction. The positive test data in Cabarrus went up this past week also to 6.64%. Over the past three weeks, it was 5.8, had a slight decline to 5.5, and now we jumped from 5.5 to 6.6. And those cases go from, they end on Saturday, and then they post them for a weekly date on Wednesday. So this Wednesday, we'll get a new update. But again, positivity is going in the wrong direction. And hospitalizations is the last one. Hospitalizations were pretty much stable. There were 35 last week, and there were 35 this week, and there were 34 the week before. So fairly good shape with hospitalizations currently.
So you're still meeting with the Health Department? What do they attribute all that to?
Yes. We meet every Monday with all the local leaders. That was today. And then on Thursday, just the two school systems meet with the Health Department to answer questions, go through anything specifically that is trending for each school system.
So they're telling you anything on the numbers or why they're trending in the wrong direction?
No, just that pretty much all indicators are going in the wrong direction right now in Cabarrus County and pretty much in the state, too. That's a state trend, and we're following the state trend.
Okay. Any questions on that report?
I'll just ask a quick question.
Go ahead, Ms. Grimsley.
So Dr. Lauter, are they saying anything that, I mean, I've heard that it's because we're actually testing more, that we actually have test kits available more than they had in the past?
No. So the testing ultimately is usually correlated to the positivity rate. So this past week, when the positivity rate went up, it was the highest amount of tests, just barely like 100. But for the past three weeks prior to that, even when we were going down, we were actually testing more people. So the amount of tests is not correlated to the positivity rate. We are actually testing a good amount of people in Cabarrus County, is what they're saying compared to a lot of counties. And over the past month or six weeks, when we've had some pretty good declines, each one of those weeks, we were testing more people than we were the week before. So right now, yes, we're testing a few more, 50, 100 more people than we did last week, but a 1% increase is pretty substantial. So no, they're not necessarily correlated. They weren't correlated until this week, if that makes sense.
I guess my thought was, I don't remember what table I was looking at, but the recovery rate, the numbers of them being asymptomatic or recovered, or I can't remember, was higher as well. So that just, I thought if they're not, the hospitalizations are not up and the recovery rates are better, so that kind of...
Yeah, I wouldn't say the recovery rates are better. What, usually like when we have active cases, that means that there's more cases coming in than people getting over the ones that they were before. Hospitalizations is in pretty good shape, but it is, in general, according to the health lines, is a lagging indicator. So theoretically, if you have more cases than a week out, two weeks out, you're going to have more hospitalizations. Doesn't necessarily mean that's what will happen, but that tends to be the pattern.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yep. So I just had a question about transmission in school. Have we had any cases where they have been, or it's been connected, that they have transmitted while they've been in the school?
Yeah, I can't, I don't want to speak to all of those, but as a general rule, no. We do not have, you know, transmission from person to person at school. Now, I can't tell you that we don't have one that somebody may have gone home today, and we may find out that they actually got that from school. But as a general rule, we don't have very many, if none, that I'm aware of right now where somebody went to school and got it from somebody else at school. So that's very low, and really across the state, from what we understand, is pretty low. But there's obviously a lot of contact tracing that gets back to where that starts. But there's obviously a lot of contact tracing that gets back to, to where that starts.
Okay, and our students have been in school since the 19th of October. How is that going? We're still reporting cases as on the website where the public can see on the website.
Yeah, so I would say overall, I mean, obviously students are coming two days a week. They're in A and B and all remote on Friday. I think our principals are saying that and would tell you that that's going well. And as you said, every Monday, we report the prior weeks, all the cases, the active cases. So that was posted usually at 5:00 on each Monday for the current week. So it goes from Monday through Sunday and then we post on Monday. That's up there, but you know, are there active cases and contact tracing and, you know, quarantines that are around those with some staff and some students? Yes, and that's all part of that dashboard that's on the website.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to share in the meeting before this, Ms. Carpenter and I were in curriculum and instruction. And that was really the focus of the meeting today is what is going well, suggestions for improvement, what is not going well. So I just wanted to commend the staff for actively watching and trying to improve and sharing information in their peer groups to improve the learning situation, so.
Anybody else? Okay, do we need to take any action? We're, we're good then at this point?
I'm not sure what, what action.
Is there any recommendations for changes? We're, we're okay?
No, I would not recommend right now be, being in Plan B where we're there two days a week and where we can essentially say that students are, students and faculty are always six feet apart. They're always wearing a mask. Is that something that we're working with the Health Alliance to? So when there is a positive case, like, like Ms. Blackwell said, if a teacher is positive, then the question that we're asking in the Health Alliance is, were they six feet apart and where they're wearing a mask? And if the answer to that is yes, then nobody else gets quarantined because they're not a close contact. So continuing to have school is pretty easy to maintain when we're doing that, even when we're quarantining, because the answer is always, no, they weren't there. So as long as we can answer that question that way, I think the feedback that I get from the schools, and I would certainly agree, is that people feel good about being in school. They feel safe, they know that, that there is an appropriate distance and mask that everybody has on. And that makes, you know, school go as well as it can considering the circumstances.
Ms. Carpenter, did you have a question?
Yeah, and, and that, we've been in two weeks, three weeks, something, two weeks. And that is going well with the temperature checks, with the keeping the mask on. You know, that had been a big question, whether we were going to be able to social distance okay? Were we going to keep masks on people? Whether we were going to be able to get the temp checks all right? So all that has gone well.
Yeah, pretty much been reported. As we said, every student gets asked the, the questions in the morning. They all get a temperature check before they can come in. That has not majorly delayed anything at school. And you know, the only, no major reports of anybody not wearing a mask. In some very specific special education classes, I can speak to, the second week that we were back, I was in a, a class with about 10 students that were, you know, fair, with disabilities are pretty severe. And you know, one of those students, the only person I've seen took off his mask and kind of threw it in the ground. It was a student that has Down syndrome. And you know, basically teacher talked to him and he picked up and put his mask back on. But the other nine students that were in that class were wearing their mask the whole time. So there are some specific classrooms with disabilities where that's a little bit more of a challenge. But as a general rule, even in those classrooms, you know, people do, and the teachers are working with them to have them in a mask whenever that's possible. So yeah, I would say all the feedback we've gotten is it's gone very well.
Y'all had shared some information with us, I think it was on the report last week, talking about how social distancing report that came out from CDC and what was it, 80? 80, was it 86%? It was the number one thing, they said.
Yeah, that was actually a slide from the Cabarrus Health Alliance that was just trying to show that basically the three W's, like you said, are really the best preventers. And the best one of those is social distance. I think second was a mask. To be honest, I don't remember what came after those, but those were number one and number two. And I think social distance was 84% reduction and a mask was like 60% reduction. And I'll, I'll get that slide and send it back to you guys. But yes, that was part of what the, the Health Alliance was trying to get out into the public.
But I thought that was very important because again, if we had not been able to social distance, our numbers probably could have been double if we had not done that. So I thought that was very interesting to see that. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Harrison.
And Dr. Lauter, can you describe staff morale in this environment and the plan that we're implementing? How are staff feeling? What is going kind of through the staff beyond the anecdotal stuff?
Yeah, the biggest feedback I've gotten is obviously when people come back, there's some anxiety about coming back to school. But once they're back and see that people really are going to be six feet apart and they are going to wear a mask and they're not going to take it off, that a lot of that anxiety is gone. And that, I can't tell you that there's nobody out there that has some type of anxiety, but most of the feedback has been, especially once the kids got back in and people see, oh, really? Kids do wear a mask all day long and they pretty much follow directions and teachers are doing that too, that the majority of people feel pretty good about the setting that we're in right now.
Okay, do we have any other questions on this topic? All right, we'll move on, thank you. Item five, section five is items for consideration for the November 16th consent agenda. We have a number of those. And we're going to start off with 5.01, which is the school improvement plans. Do we have Mr. Matthew Fail here? He's coming, okay, we'll give him just a minute. And those are also on Board Docs, it's a zip file that you open that up. There's, every school's got their plan that's reviewable.
I do have some questions answered.
Good evening, good to see you.
Good evening, thank you. Want to thank all of our schools and their staff for their hard work they put into their school improvement plans. You've had the CISP now, I believe, for several weeks. We haven't received any questions, so we're asking that you put the school improvement plans on consent for approval.
Okay, you all had times to review these. Do you need more time or do we have questions? And I'm going to start with Ms. Furtenbaum.
Yeah, hey, Matthew. I have a couple of questions and they're really not, I'll say directed at individual plans or whatever. But one of them is just a, a writing scenario is there were so many acronyms in the plans this year that I didn't know. So if, if you could just ask schools to follow the practice of spelling out the words the first time they use it and then putting the acronym in your kind of basic writing technique, that would be really helpful. So I would figure it out or Google it, but it'd be really helpful for the, I'll say just the average person who's not involved in that plan creation. I was very happy to see that some plans had teacher self-care goals, especially in light of the situation, we were just talking about mental health and whatnot. So I just wanted to compliment the schools that did that. From the goals that are set, because of the current environment we're in, some of the goals will be difficult to achieve or they will have to be done in a very alternate way. Will the schools be, I'll say judged, evaluated on what they can and cannot achieve? Or is it, there going to be a level of understanding this year that they can't meet everything?
Yeah, there'll be a level of understanding, not to mention the schools own those plans. So it's funny that you mentioned that because I had several, even based on what they did last year, do almost a complete rewrite for what they could accomplish and how they could accomplish it this year. So they'll continue to monitor those and adjust as necessary and that's acceptable.
Okay, and my last question is just about the facility needs that we always see. And not just facility, but I'll say common needs. So sometimes with the budget priorities, we would see that all of the high schools agreed they needed to add assistant principals or they needed to add social workers. Those things aren't in the school improvement plan. So are they doing their budget requests separately? And so they're still doing like a TRIGO process with the score or with their grade level across the county?
Yes, that budget process is still in place, yes.
Okay, so they'll still have that additional information coming that they feel would feed into their CISP goals?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum. Do we have anybody else on the side? That side over there? All right, that being said there, do we want to put this on consent as it's requested? Yes?
I think it's consent.
Okay, we've got a consensus for consent. We'll move on to our next item, which is 5.02, the 2021, 2022 academic calendar. And I've got Brian Schultz coming up to talk to us about that. And Ms. Burns as well, so.
Almost forgot how to work these. Good evening, Chairman Walter, Dr. Lauter and members of the board. It's great to be back up here in front of you in person. So just, we'd like to go over the 2021, or 21, 22 academic calendar recommendation. You have all the documents, the calendars. Recommendations that you have include the traditional calendar, the year round or the balanced calendar, as we call it, for Wolf Meadow. And we also have the calendar for the early colleges, which mirror the RCCC schedule. So with that, we'll click to the next slide. So tonight, we want to make sure they have a, you review the request for approval for the academic calendars that you, we want to make sure that we have a common understanding of the NC calendar law and what you'll find that that's possibly cloudy at best right now. And then we also want to take a look at the, make sure you have the opportunity to ask any questions or give any input that you have related to the academic calendar. So as a reminder, back in May, we had this thing start, well, it was the beginning of the pandemic. And then the legislator, state legislators got together and made a recommendation for a revised school academic calendar. So I came to you about three or four different times, I remember then. And we were very hurried in getting our calendar committee together and really adopted the, the guidelines set out in the statute. So the, the big thing in that was the addition of five remote learning days. So we do have that, obviously have been taking full, have full use of those. We also have those available to us for inclement weather days. We've taken advantage of that once already as well because of the high winds that we had. So you can see the time requirements are 185 days or 1,025 hours and those five remote learning days. And I'll say specifically, if you look in the, the top there, it says for the 2020, 2021 school year only. So in that legislation, it was only specified for this academic calendar year. So we are making the grand assumption that we are going to revert back to the former calendar law unless the legislators act on that again this year. But we felt compelled to go ahead and bring forth a recommendation for you for next year without knowing if or what the legislators would do with calendar law. Because our, we feel like our public deserves to have something in writing at this point and a plan to look at and a plan to plan for and around. So we want to go ahead and make that recommendation to you. Go ahead, Larry, thanks. So just a reminder about the prior legislation. That start date is the Monday closest, closest to August 26th. The end date is no later than the Friday, closest to June 11th. There's the time requirements that should look familiar that do not have the remote learning option on, the remote learning days on them. And then 10-month staff should have a total of 215 workdays altogether. And then we, there are some local considerations that we make here in Cabarrus County. And these have kind of been formulated over the years. Those include no school for students on election days. And those include the primaries that you can see. And those can sometimes be called in the middle of the year and we have two months to prepare for them. And that's happened. So we just plan for those primaries when we know them and we plan around them when we find out about them, about surprise. But we feel strongly for, for several reasons, for the safety of our students and also for allowing the public to use our public facilities to do an act of citizenry for that voting. So we do plan around those primaries and election days. And then we prefer a workday at the end of April. And that's really in preparation of AP exams, IB exams that happen in early May. And then we also prefer a workday after the end of each quarter and then the preference of a two-week winter break. Now, none of those are set in law, but those, again, those are local context preferences that we have. All right, and then there's also the year, year-round schools that are defined. You'll see three definitions, go ahead Larry, click all three of those in. You'll see three definitions. We follow the second definition, which is 45 days on, 15 days off. And that is what you'll see in the recommendation that we made for Wolf Meadow's balanced calendar. So just a recap of the meetings that we've had to lock this calendar in terms of the recommendation. It was previously formulated at the end of the last calendar cycle. But recently, we've met in calendar committee. You'll see on September 24th, also October 29th. And then obviously tonight, we're here together reviewing that. And we will get some feedback from Superintendent's Advisory Committee as well as obviously our calendar committee is also, is also composed of representatives of our community. We have parents, teachers, administrators, central office staff that review and provide feedback as well. And then lastly, next week, we'll recommend for you to approve that calendar. And again, I want to say this so the public hears it too, knowing full well that there could be some legislative changes to our calendar. We may be back again talking about those changes. But again, we wanted to, wanted to field an academic calendar so folks could see it, look at it, plan around it possibly and, and make some plans going into next academic year. All right, and the next three slides you'll see, and Larry, if you go ahead and click in the calendar as well, you'll see the three versions that we have. It's the traditional version, the, the year-round slash balanced version, as well as the early college version. You also have access to all of these documents in the Board Docs. And so just what you'll notice, a student's start date here, this is the traditional calendar that encompasses most of the schools in Cabarrus County. A student's start date of August 23rd. And you'll see the number of days in the semesters, you'll see the last day of school is June 9th. We hit the required hours of 1,082, so we're actually over that. And then we have six cap workdays, you'll see the optional days, the required statutory, statutory required holidays for a total of 215 staff days down at the bottom. So that's the traditional. Do we have any questions about any of those logistics or any of the things surrounding that calendar? And I will say that we, if you look at the calendars closely, when you take a look at the draft of those, we did build in that the superintendent may have the option to use a remote learning day for an inclement weather day. I think a lot of people like that option. But we've also built additional, those additional hours in like we have in the past in the event that we have some catastrophic event where we don't have electricity, we don't have power, we don't have internet connection. So we think it's important to pad the number of hours to make sure that we could either waive days or make those days up. All right, so the next one that Larry pulled up, thank you Larry, is the early college calendar. And again, that reflects the, the RCCC calendar that our students have at the Early College of Technology and then the Early College High School on the South Campus. And, and again, it starts earlier, the, the staff workdays actually begin in, in late July. And you'll see the student start date of August 4th. And you'll see the number of days, they have more than enough hours as well. Over there, the early college, 10 cap workdays, 10 optional workdays, the, the 10 holidays. And you'll ask, well, I thought they had 11, but they get out before Memorial Day, so they're not required to take that, that day. So again, a total of 215 staff days there. Okay, any question on the early college calendar? Okay, we'll move along. And the last one is the, the Wolf Meadow calendar, again, which is the balanced or, or year-round calendar. One more click for me, Larry, thank you. And they have a, a student's start date of July 15th. And again, this is pandemic pending and, and legislation pending as well. And then they go into that 45 days on, 15 days off cycle. And I do want to add on those 15 days off, a lot of times students are actually in remediation or some sort of enrichment session during that time that's typically offered during that time. or some sort of enrichment session during that time. That's typically offered during that time for the students at Wolfmeadow. You'll see the total student days at 178. Their last day for instruction in that calendar year is June 7. And again, all the required days. They have some additional instructional hours for a total of 215 staff days. All right. Any questions on that? So go into the next steps. Rob, did you have a question? Next steps, we have some additional feedback to collect through those, the parent-teacher advisory councils that we have. We're going to monitor the calendar legislation. I don't know that I could say that enough. We're going to monitor changes in guidance related to the pandemic through the institutions that we have set up to do that. Obviously, we'll monitor Governor Cooper's reopening phases, the NCDPI, Cabarrus Health Alliance, as well as the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So with that, I'll take any questions at this time.
Okay. Questions from our board members? Ms. Hurtinball, you want to start?
It's not really a question, I guess. I just want to make a comment. I don't know if all the board members completed the NCSBA survey, but the calendar was an extensive topic on there, and it gave different options. Do you, is your goal to finish the first semester before Christmas? How, basically, there was a question about how early to start. And I know David and Carolyn did it, right? And I forget what all the angles were, but there was a lot of depth to the questions. So I'm hoping that means NCSB in January will set the legislative agenda to definitely include some of these factors.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, we got a few gray hairs who have been around a while, and that is, every year, is what district after district after district asks for calendar flexibility to meet the needs of our students and to meet the local context of schooling. And certainly, I do think if we got that flexibility, we would, we'd know what we do. I'll just put it that way.
Ms. Blackwell, you have anything? Ms. Grimsley? Mr. Harrison? Mr. Sheemaker?
Just one, I have just one little question, and that is regarding the number of hours per day. And why Wolfmeadow is .08 higher than everybody else, than their, the other traditional?
Yeah, thought, do you have an answer for that? I thought they were the same.
They're, they're, they're a little bit longer.
They're a little bit longer. It just has to do with their daily schedule and how they put their day together.
Okay. I just, you just, you know, you got, you got extra hours out of them, but the rest of this traditional calendar was just a little bit shorter. That's, I just wondered. Thanks.
Yeah. Is that the number of days as well? Sue, don't they have extra days as well?
So, the traditional is 6.08 hours per day, and Wolfmeadow is 6.16. So you're adding eight one-hundredths of an hour a day, but when you multiply that times 178, it adds up. So that is, and it's been that way since I can recall doing calendars.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick question. And I'm not sure, Brian, if this is the time or place. But so with a, with a calendar day or a student's day, is that being calculated differently from in-person versus remote learning? Or are they expected to be the same?
Right now, my understanding is the same. And the action that the legislators took last year at the end of the year was that the remote learning days fulfilled the calendar legislation. So that was actually legislation that they enacted and said, forget about counting hours. Remote learning days count. They fulfilled the time requirement. And we're operating under that same assumption right now.
So I'm actually talking about the ones that chose to stay home completely, not just the remote a couple of days a week, but the ones that chose to be there. So are they putting in the same amount of hours on a remote day as the in-person?
Oh, are you talking about in terms of instruction, or the, like, the school day from start to end? The answer is yes.
Right. Okay.
But there's some variability, you know, with our remote learning students and the activities that they do independently versus the students that are in-person and how quickly they finish them and sign off.
Okay. For some reason, I was thinking there was an email that came out that stated there was a difference in timing from when they were in. So that was maybe a conflict. You know, the child goes in-person on Monday and is there all day, but Tuesday's remote, and they didn't have as much time. There was something I read that I thought maybe there was a little bit of conflict there.
Yeah, I might defer to my, my friend at the back, Crystal, Dr. Crystal Hill, about that. She might be able to fill in some information. But I'll check with her.
Or if you can just let us know.
Yeah, I will.
That was just, that seemed to be a little bit of a conflict. If the child was expected to be in class all day, one day, surely the same amount of time is spent at remote. I don't know how we'd keep up with it.
Right. The virtual schedules are very different, are different, there's variability than the in-person schedules. And that's a general response to that. But if you need particulars, I can get those for you.
Ms. Carpenter, do you have any?
All right. I had two things, and I've said them before, but I think it's best if we can end the first semester before Christmas. I think that's an important consideration for our students. And then related to that, you know, our annual teacher survey, teachers are one of the lower-ranking items here, says teachers have sufficient instructional time to meet the needs of all students. You know, we're allowed 172 days, and we're only taking advantage of 178 of those days. So there are seven instructional days that may help towards improving that. But I know we've got a lot of restrictions with the state that might prevent us from doing that, but those are my two thoughts.
All right. Thank you.
And that's, are we okay with consent, or do we want to put this on consent? Consent? Everybody okay with consent? All right. That'll be on our consent agenda for next week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So we're going to move on to 5.03, which is policy revisions for approval on first reading, and we do have a number of these. So.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just stay, stay put.
Stay where you're at.
Good scheduling there. And Sue's, Sue's on the side assisting here as well. And I just want to thank her for all the work that she puts into this. She's really the expert when it comes to this, and I'm just, I'm the mouthpiece. So thank you, Sue, for all the work that you do. And especially this round, I'd also like to acknowledge our board attorney and friends, right? Because I know Katie Cornetto and Mr. Schwartz, and obviously Brian Shaw have really helped a lot with the Title IX updates. So I think where I'd like to start with is, if we just kind of keep this up here, but I do want to start with the policies, the last three policies, and then we'll dive into the Title IX policy. So use of the unmanned aircraft, and that's one that we've seen here before. That's policy 4334, 5035, 7945. We did have some, some, I call them technical edits, but maybe a little bit more than technical edits. I will say that, that actually, this was a board request. I know that Mr. Walter, along with Dan Collins, are dress, Director of Risk Management, as well as, I know there was a, an official with, was it with the FAA, Rob?
Yeah, the State Department of Transportation.
Right. So they, they met and assisted on making sure they had the right terminology. So when you look at the red lines on this, you'll see a lot of the remote pilot-in-command. So that was using that correct terminology for that and defining that. Talked about that the remote pilot-in-command shall ensure that drone is operated following safe operating procedures, as defined in the drone user manual. And then there was a must hold, must be in this, anybody that operates a drone on school grounds should hold a current invalid remote pilot airman certificate and has passed the Transportation Security Authority vetting process. So those are some of the major changes in that. And I'd say, you know, Chairman Walter or Mr. Shaw, if there's anything you want to add to that?
I just thought it'd improve the flow, and it makes the terminology standard to FAA's terminology.
I just have a question about when it refers, that one change to the drone user manual. Is that per device? Is that different? Or is there something from the state that should be referenced there, or the feds?
I think that was per the actual drone that they're using.
For the actual device you're operating?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. I just wanted to say it's very useful to have input from the gentleman from NCDOT. His expertise was useful on this. And thank you to Mr. Walter for encouraging that.
Yeah, and this is a growing area, so stay tuned. It's evolving, and I'm sure this policy will evolve as the technology and the use of drones evolve as well. So the next policy, it'll just keep going upwards. The graduation requirements is really minor edits on this one. It was really changing the names of assessments. So if you take a look at that, you'll see there's just very, very few changes. And it's in Section B, and it changes the term post-assessments to state assessments to be consistent with the terminology that's used in the career technical education language right now. So that was the, really, the only change in that. And then, so any questions on that one? Pretty quick and minor. And then the last one is the testing and assessment program. That's policy 3410. And again, these are pretty minor as well. It deletes the NC final exams, or we call them NCFEs. Some people called them other things. But it actually deleted those because those are no longer a requirement for courses in high, in elementary through high school. And then in Section B, changed the, that terminology, again, post-assessments to state assessments. And that, again, follows that CTE language. And then it deletes the last sentence of, in Section B, to reflect a change in CTE proof of learning requirements. So just following some state, state guidance there with those changes. Okay. Any questions there? Okay, we'll move on to Title IX. So I'll kind of preface this by saying the new federal regulations were released in May for Title IX. They added unique demands to schools' compliance under obligations of Title IX. And that was an act that was put in place in 1972, which prohibits sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the board's education programs and activities. So previously, the Title IX was wrapped under kind of one large policy. And it really no longer, that's really no longer feasible for the work that we do. And, you know, so accordingly, the new policies in this update kind of individualize the terms. So what you'll see of the six policies that are in the Title IX section up there, two of those really, I call them the omnibus policies, maybe, so the 1725 and the 1726 really take up the mass of the changes in this new Title IX legislation. So those really talk about the process of, the grievance process and settling disputes or grievances either informally or formally. And it talks about how we're required to provide support for anyone that files a grievance. And then, and then it talks about the reporting. So how are we supposed to report? How are we supposed to support? And then, and then that process, and then determining the final, the final outcome or the final decision, so to speak. So those two policies really encompass all of that that I said so shortly, but they're very long policies. And then what you'll see, the other four policies, and I'll just visually point to them, is 1760, 4001, 1710, and 1720. These two are the new ones. You'll see new off to the side. So the other four policies were existing policies that we, that already existed. So we made adjustments, and I'd say minor, but maybe in one case, there's a little, we took out most of the sexual harassment, sexual discrimination language, and put it into 1725 and 1726. And, and really refined those policies to fit the needs of the district while still having, you know, some really clear Title IX policies in 1725 and 1726. So with that, like I said, we had a lot of, a lot of assistance with this. Our policy committee has reviewed this. Our district has had extensive training, and I really want to point that out. So we have a contact from each school that's been through training on the new Title IX legislation. We have members of the policy committee, in fact, three of the principals in the policy committee have been through 12 hours of training on this new Title IX policy. Myself, Ms. Jones back there, Ms. Burns, Ms. Burns has the, she gets the gold star because she's been to over 20 hours of training on the new Title IX policy. So we have some extensive training that's done in-house already. And we thought it was really important for principal at each level to have that extensive training as well as each contact in the school. And, and Brian and his team, Schwartz and Shaw, have been really great providing that training. HR contacts provided, were provided training through them as well. And then I know our board members are receiving training tomorrow night to go through and be updated and know the relevant pieces of all this Title IX policy. So it's really long-winded to say, we have a lot of training, there's a lot of major updates. Although that this was enacted at the federal level, I'll tell you the date officially on August 14. But have no fear, we're following that already, regardless of whether our policy gets into place. We are following that, that federal policy. And then this, we need to formalize it into policy with the, at the school board level. So with that, any questions on the Title IX?
Brian, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think Brian Schultz did a great job summarizing it. I understand there'll be board training tomorrow. And so that's probably your best opportunity to ask questions, but I'm certainly glad to entertain any questions here tonight. Richard Schwartz is going to be doing the training, my partner. He's done many already, a lot of school boards. So I think he's well-versed to answer any questions then. I can maybe give a little context for this. Over the last number of years, there'd been concern that, especially at the university level, that alleged perpetrators, primarily male, were not receiving due process and had been expelled from school and having their lives affected through sexual harassment proceedings that had a lot of problems with fairness. And as the universities rightfully and properly tried to address sexual violence, a lot of people felt that they had, maybe pendulum had swung too far the other way. And so at least the Department of Education felt that. The Department of Education then put together these regulations that provide more due process for both sides. But it lengthens out the process extensively. And if it's a sexual harassment, it's going to take weeks to resolve a sexual harassment claim. And it is a new way of doing business for K through 12 schools at least. We were familiar with short-term suspensions up to 10 days. That can be done pretty quickly. Long-term suspensions have a hearing, due process at the hearing, but then it would be addressed. Well, that's all put on hold, and you have to follow these Title IX procedures instead. And there will be several decisions that the board has to make on what you put in your policy. And Mr. Schwartz will go over that tomorrow night. But that's sort of the background. We thought the easiest way to do that was to keep your existing policies, 1710 and 1720, as unchanged as possible, just move out the sexual harassment into the new policies, 1725 and 1726. So they're standalone, and then make as few changes as, just, just what's absolutely required on 1710 and 1720. Because it's a heavy lift for the board to get a handle on 1725 and 1726, let alone try to revise those other policies as well. So that's the theory. Keep 1710 and 1720 for all other bullying and discrimination. Move sexual harassment into 1725 and 1726. And I will just say that we have been incredibly impressed at our law firm with how knowledgeable and how much training the administration here has received. Glenda, and HR, and Sue, and Brian, just a lot more training on sexual harassment here at Cabarrus than we've seen with other school districts. And I think it'll serve you in good stead.
Mr. Harrison?
I hope this is a relevant question. It's probably a complicated legal question. But we have at least one policy that deals with staff-student relations. Is that completely and wholly separate and apart from the Title IX considerations, which to a layperson could sound like there would be some overlap? Is there a particular reason why the student-staff relations policy is not blended into these particular updates? And if that's just not relevant, that's, that's my answer, I'm sure.
Yeah, sure. Actually, that, that will be on next month's first, first read. We have, have that up. Our attorneys right now are reviewing that. But in the training, they said that if you have staff and student, it is not Title IX. Title IX is staff and staff and student, student because of the differential in power. So that would be a whole different situation.
Thank you.
Other questions? Do we need to wait till next week to approve them after we do this training? Or should we, is it okay to put them in consent?
Well, it was actually calculated to do it this way. I thought your training might be more valuable if you had a chance to just see what these policies might look like. But before you actually have any vote, it'd be useful to have some training. So that's how, that's how we're thinking. I think it'd be perfectly appropriate to have it for consent. Well, it should, it should be discussion. It should be action because there will be some decisions that would flow from the training.
Okay, so we can put the other three on consent? The thirty-four-ten, thirty-four-sixty, and forty-three-thirty-four?
I think that works.
That makes sense.
Is that okay with everybody? Yes, yes. Ms. Carpenter? Okay for consent. All right, we'll do that. So we'll have our training and we'll revisit that next week. All right, let's move on to.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again for the updates. Five-point-oh-four, Beginning Teacher Support Plan Amendment. And we have Ms. Angie Wood with us tonight to go over that change. Good evening. Welcome.
Right, good evening. On August tenth, twenty-twenty, the Cabarrus County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Plan was approved by the CCS Board of Education. Since that time, the State Board of Education is now requiring that we add language to the plan that requires beginning teachers to complete the recent graduate survey and the principal to complete the employer survey during the beginning teacher's first year of teaching. The surveys are for the purpose of assessing educator preparation programs, or EPPs, not school districts. The data will be collected at the state level and be used by the state and EPPs to determine how well they are preparing teachers for our classrooms. This is just one measure of how well the EPPs are preparing teachers for our classrooms. These surveys will be distributed directly to principals and beginning teachers by the state. The Human Resources Department will follow up with principals and beginning teachers regarding completion of the surveys. We are asking for a board motion to approve the amendment adding the approved NCDPI language to our Beginning Teacher Support Plan. This amendment will add the requirement for beginning teachers to complete the recent graduate survey and the principal to complete the employer survey during the beginning teacher's first year of teaching. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Ms. Grimsen?
I have a question, and I'm not sure that this fits here, and you may just have to tell me so, but I had a lady to ask me about, does Cabarrus County require subs to be trained after they have retired and had numerous years of experience? Do they fall back into a category of needing some type of beginning teacher training once they become a sub after they've been a retired teacher?
No, they do not. They, we provide an orientation for them to learn how to use our system called AESOP on the flip side as a substitute because they've only used it as a teacher, but that's the only required training.
So what, what does that entail?
That's like a thirty-minute overview of AESOP. We've actually had subs come in individually to do that. If, you know, the times that we offer that doesn't meet their needs, or the retirees to come in individually to do that.
Okay, so there's no multi-day training session?
No, our subs that have not been through an educator preparation program are required to take effective teacher training. And that is offered now online to make it more convenient for those subs. But that is not required for retirees or teachers who have a teaching license.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on this side? Over here, Shoemaker?
Ms. Wood, I just want to know, what is the actual amendment? It's, I see these numbers, but the first one says this amendment. So then I was like, okay, where is the actual amendment that we're voting on?
The amendment, it's in here if you want to, is it possible to open that? So it is, it is literally just to include the line in number two. The completion of the recent graduate survey by the beginning teacher and completion of the employer survey by the principal.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's, I was just trying to figure out what we were actually going to vote on. And that was, or what we would have.
Yeah, great question, thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Carpenter?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Shaw, can we put this on consent or do we have to vote for it? Okay, okay. And then my question is, do we, can we see the questions that are offered on this survey? Or what questions, what is it?
That is a survey that the state is creating and sending directly to beginning teachers and principals. So we don't have any.
They don't say what the questions are, what they're asking for?
Not to my knowledge at this point.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrison.
And just very quickly, how many beginning teachers do we have this year? Or what's the cohort or the number of staff that this will affect?
I, I think, I don't have the exact numbers, but it is pretty typical for our numbers to be between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five first-year teachers. I think we're still falling within that range at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, board members, are we okay to put that on consent? Anybody, okay, that'll be on consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wood for your time. Moving on, we got five-point-five budget amendments. Ms. Klutz?
Good afternoon, board. We have a few budget amendments for you today. We'll start with the state. The primary adjustments that you're seeing, you can see in line two, there's the allocation for principal bonuses. Those were paid in October and those represent the same amount that the principals received last year because we didn't have any different testing results. And then the, the final adjustment there is an increase in, or an allotment for EC funding specifically related to COVID. Any questions on state budget amendments? Okay, go to the next one. There's more pages there. Okay, we have local budget amendment. This is an amendment to move funds into essentially a break-fix category to hire more technology technicians. Again, related to COVID and the situation that we're currently in. We notified the board, I believe in September, that we were going to present this budget amendment. Okay, next. Is there federal budget amendments? There was a miscalculation at the state, so some of the federal budgets were reduced. And so the, the description there is adjust from planning to actual allotment. And then there is toward the bottom, you'll see the allocation of the Greer Funds, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds. There's that allocation. Okay, and the last one that we have is, this is our child nutrition fund. We don't amend it very often, but in order to get everything in the right place, we used, we were allocated one-point-three million dollars of funds from the state to help child nutrition. And so this helped us get everything in the place to be able to utilize all of those funds by the deadline, which is December thirty-first. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to sweep all of those in. And that allows us to do that. Okay, any questions on any of the budget amendments?
Board members, okay to put this on consent? Yes, yes. Okay, that'll be on to consent. Thank you, Ms. Klutz, I guess you can stay where you're at because we have another item. Five-point-oh-six is requested funds from Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners for a new computer lease.
Yes, we found ourselves in a position of being in a one-to-one district overnight in March when COVID happened. Our, started prior to COVID, students came to school and took a device from a cart if they needed that device. And then they would put it back into the cart when they were finished with that class. And not every class needed a computer. So when we had to allocate thirty-four thousand devices to thirty-four thousand students, we found that the old plan and the old method didn't work. We were, we'd been planning for years to try to go to a one-to-one, but there's never been funds available to do that. And doing it the way that we'd done it with carts worked in the, in the situation that we had. But now that we're with COVID and every student has a device that they take home, we really can't function with the number of devices that we have and, and the older devices that we have. So we brainstormed and tried to figure out a way to make this work because of all of the COVID funding that's coming in and the ability, the state allowing us to be held harmless for the enrollment decreases. I was able to say that I would front up the, the first million dollars of a lease if we could get the county to fund that effective July first of the following year. So I would fund the first million and then the following three years, the county would fund and budget for us. And so we made that request to the county last week. They were extremely receptive and understand the position that we're in. And they have that on their agenda to approve next week. So this would be contingent on you approving and them approving that, that the, it was very favorable receipt. So are there any questions about the request and the ability to enter into lease?
Ms. Ferdinand?
I have a question. This letter was already sent then.
I'm sorry?
This letter was already sent?
To get on the agenda for their meeting, yes.
Okay, so do we even, we don't need to approve it then if it's already sent?
So it was, no, we do need to, I mean, you have to approve it, yes. Because everything will be contingent on, so it's contingent on your request that the commissioners approve it. And then our lease is contingent on the, on the commissioner. So it's back and forth. They're both contingent on each board. So we need both boards.
Okay, because I saw the letter wasn't updated.
Right.
Because there were a couple errors in there.
It had already.
Like minor things, but.
Yeah, it went to.
I'd like it to be a hundred percent correct.
Sure.
But it was already sent, so those don't matter.
It was already sent, yes.
Okay.
Questions? Are we okay with this? And then we can put it on consent, is that correct?
Yeah, I do think it's important to say that, as we said, Ms. Dubois, when she was here, and now Mr. Harris and Ms. Klutz and Mr. Downs, we've all tried to figure out a way to have a lease that maintains this so we don't have these spurts of money that are not recurring. And they have worked very hard to get us to this place. And as Ms. Klutz said, try to figure out how we can make sure that we have recurring money. And so as Ms. Klutz said, we, we presented to them last week, they were very receptive. And from the beginning, when we first mentioned it, and Mr. Downs and Mr. Harris said, yeah, this is something that we have to figure out. So again, we appreciate the work that they've done over the past three or four years to get us in the place where one more million puts us almost the way there. So it's a tribute to Ms. Klutz and her work and certainly the county's willingness to figure out how to make this work over several years. So we just want to make sure that we say we appreciate that and puts us in a great position because we do believe that there's no going back from this, even when we have a vaccine and it's there, that we're kind of in a situation where being able to access computer at home is going to be required. So we appreciate their willingness to get us to that place.
And we have, we have, I guess, devices that aren't updatable or aren't servable to school anymore? Is that why we need to rush in this as well?
So there's twenty, about twenty-two thousand, I had it in my email somewhere, twenty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five devices that will not be supported as of September twenty-twenty-one. And we're obviously all expecting, experiencing delays from computer companies in getting those devices. So the quicker that we can order those, the better it will be for students and, and getting those, and when those devices aren't supported any longer. So there is a big concern about those twenty-two thousand.
That's why we're putting it on the agenda this month. Okay with consent or do we want to put this on action? Oops, we have a request for action. Okay, well, we'll put it on action for next week. Now, we're going to move on to, thank you, Ms. Klutz, I appreciate your time.
Still here. One more.
All right, next one.
One more.
Which is five-point-oh-eight, is that right? So five-point-oh-eight is board member training credit.
Oh, no, we got to do.
Five-point-oh-seven. Okay, there we go, sorry. Jumping, request for new student device lease and related budget amendments. So.
So assuming the commissioner, so assuming you approve the request, assuming the commissioners approve the funding and the ability to do the lease, this is the lease that we have for you. So it would be a million dollars for a four-year lease and the, the detail is attached there if we want to open that up and look at it.
Okay, we have a question here, Ms. Ferdinand?
So I just have a question about the sales tax because it's so big when you're doing a large purchase like that.
Yes.
Will the commissioners, when that comes back, how long is it going to take? Because that's a quarter of a million dollars.
So you have to pay, with the lease, you have to pay the four years upfront. So you're paying the tax on the value of the product, not on the lease. And because those funds are given to us in our pot of money, we only get the local portion. We won't get the state portion back. So when the county, when we do construction and the county pays the money at the county, then we get the entire portion back. But this one will only get the local portion back.
But my question is not so much what we get back, but.
When?
Yeah, how long does it take? And will we get it back or will it go directly to the commissioners back?
This particular, these particular dollars, we will get back.
Okay. So that's some reinvestment money then in repairs or whatever?
True. And, and we file every October-ish and we always get our money back by about December.
Okay, so it'll still be next year?
It'll still be next year.
Okay. I was just curious, just because it's such a large amount. Okay.
Okay, other questions on this item? Okay, since, I guess the other one was action, this would have to be action too. All right, so we'll talk about this again next week. And now we can move on to five-point-oh-eight, which is board member training credit. And we've had a couple of board members do some recent training. And if you can, I guess we got three, Ms. Carpenter, you took our reconnect to move forward mental health and wellness virtual meeting. Can you give us three minutes or less what that was about?
Yes, that's, I'll be more than happy to. Yes, this was a very excellent course and it was offered from NC State University. And again, it was free. I received a scholarship to take this course from NC Connect Program, which that is sponsored by a lot of local businesses. They give money to this. It addressed many mental health needs for students that have been facing many challenges during this time of COVID-nineteen. Also, it, it talked about the shortcomings that we have with mental health, which was just discussed tonight in the school with the mental health field where they, they don't have a lot of healthcare workers. How problems have grown since COVID has started and how they are being addressed and the roles of the schools that we have in this area. Examples of physical, mental abuse, of physical abuse of children, of physical disabilities and illnesses, loss of friends and family members, and bullying, physical, personal and cybering, and also the mental health needs. We also talked about the needs of, talked about the, excuse me, I've lost my place here. Oh, as I talked about earlier, how we need to work towards the funding, full funding of IDEA. Also, we saw the video, which a lot of you, if you were at the state convention this weekend, you saw the video of Emma, the little. you saw the video of Emma, the little girl that had the brain problem, and how she was working to try to become a nurse. But this was, it was a very good video, but she was in a Title I school, and she actually was working and wanted to become a nurse, but she had the disability. But it was a very, very good video. But also, they told us how we could get information on the Strong School Toolkit, which gives a lot of good information. I got the phone number and the email, and I'm going to request this Strong School Toolkit, and it'll give us a lot of other information. But it was a very good three hours that I spent, and they are going to be offering some more courses. And of course, you know me, love to get, love to work.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Carpenter on that training? All right, we also had Ms. Furtinbaugh. She attended NSBA's Public School Transformation Now campaign. Three minutes or less, can you tell us what that's about?
It won't even take three minutes. Yeah, I just was, received an email about this National School Board Association. It was a free event. It was a kickoff presentation about school transformation, especially in light of the pandemic, and how all of us as local school districts had to kind of reinvent how teaching was being done. So it talked a lot about what we need to adjust, how we need to rethink. We may need to adjust how we're spending our technology dollars. There were three former governors there who were all considered education governors in their home states, as well as a couple experts in the area. So it was just, it was interesting to hear different perspectives. All of them boiled down to, we have to figure out how to get Wi-Fi connectivity to every home and work with the providers, maybe have some legislative incentives. Of course, we can't do that, but from Raleigh, from our standpoint, to figure out how to have these companies make low-cost offerings that can only go to certain sites, for example, back to your home school district site, to certain products. You know, they're not meant to be streaming videos and watching movies and playing online games. So it was just an interesting perspective, and with my interest in technology, I jumped on it when I had the chance, so.
Thank you for attending. Do we have any questions for Cindy on that training? Are we okay with consent on both these items? All right, that'll be on to consent. So we're going to move on to items, where are we? Excuse me, whoops, 5.09, one more. 5.09 is approval of board intern. And if you remember our last public session, we had a pretty impressive young lady who spoke to us. Well, I think Ms. Carpenter, you reached out to her and told her about the board intern that we have, and that policy is attached. But she considered that, and she went forward with getting the appropriate documentation to us, and so we have a letter of interest. And we also received some pretty nice letters of recommendation from some teachers and the principal of Cox Mill High School. So she's met all the requirements to become the intern. Ms. Carpenter, do you want to add anything else to the meeting that you had with her?
As you mentioned, Mr. Walters, I did kind of talk with her, told her what our previous interns had done in the past, gave her the policy numbers, all the policies that are involved with that, so she could read over those policies. And if she had any questions, let her ask me questions. And she seemed very excited about the possibility of becoming one of our interns. And so I left that with her and told her what she would need to do. But she is a senior this year, so that's why we wanted to go ahead and get this on the agenda, so she, if she is approved, because I did tell her she would need to be approved by this board, she was excited about it and did want to participate. So I think she would make a good intern. So hopefully, we can get her approved so she could jump aboard, because she does want to come very much involved. Her, I think, going to college, she is going to be in communications, and that's her field. And so I think she would make an excellent, excellent intern, and I think she would be very involved. So I would make a recommendation that we did do accept her.
It would be contingent upon her parents signing an agreement, giving us.
Yes, she would need, the only form that's left to do is she would need to sign, and we would need our attorney to update that form, but her parents would need to sign that form, and she would need to sign it, because I think she signs it and her parents sign it, and that's the only thing we would need.
Once she did, she could join us as early as next week.
Yeah, she could.
Okay, comments? Are we, are we okay with adding Ms. Finley Edwards as our board intern for this school year? Okay, we've got a lot of head shakes, so we will add that to consent, and we will send her the agreement for her parents to sign, and then she'll hopefully join us next week. All right, that was all we had for consideration for the consent agenda. We have a few items here for the action items for next week. We have 6.01, which we have the honor of naming the new middle school that's under construction off of Berta Road. And last month, we solicited the public's input on some names for this new middle school. And we had, how many did we get? We got 16 name suggestions, and my hope tonight is that we can reduce this to maybe three, and then next week, we can vote on one of those three names. So you want me to read these names that came out? Is that for the public's purpose, if they haven't seen that? We have Roberta Middle School. We have Central Cabarrus Middle School. We have Warren Clay Coleman Middle School. And each of these submittals had a form that gave us some more information about why they were suggesting these names. Edwards Middle School. Nelson Ed Powell Middle School. Central Middle School. Ruth Bader Ginsburg Middle School. Claudette Coben Middle School. Pitt School Middle School. Donald J. Trump Middle School. Roberta Road Middle School. And we have somebody, Schoolie McSchoolface Middle School. Eazy Smith Middle School. Cannon Johnson Middle School. Cabarrus Middle, and then Roberta Mill Middle. And you all have seen all those forms?
And there's Concord Knights.
Did I say Concord Knights? I didn't see that on the list.
No, it wasn't on the presentation, but it is on the one, one line.
Okay, so we do have one more, so that would make 17 Concord Knights.
Mr. Chairman, can we get clarification? What will be the school address? Will it be Cochrane Road or Roberta Road?
Do we have somebody here that can answer that?
It faces Roberta Road, so I don't think it will be Cochrane, but we'll check and make sure.
Okay. I wasn't sure, because I know there's two kind of entrances right now.
So I'm going to open it up for discussion.
Well, since I have my mic on, I was just going to share, we have several requests for Roberta variations. I think that would be nice to honor the area without using a familial name of the prior property owners, but one of those requests was about the Roberta Mill. And since it will be associated with Robinson, most likely by districting, that was the intent originally, is that correct, Dr. Lauter? I think we can kind of toss out a couple, like, you know, Central Cabarrus and whatnot, because it's not going to be associated with Central Cabarrus. But I'd like to see the location or historical reference to the area. I like that.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. Anyone else? Ms. Carpenter?
Y'all know, my preference, I always like roads where you can find it. And I agree with Ms. Furtinbaugh on this. I think the Roberta Road area, and it was stated in a couple of the references, I think the Roberta Mill Middle or Roberta Road Middle, personally, those two are my highest preference. And the third highest preference is the Roberta, just the Roberta Middle School. I mean, if we were picking three high preferences, but those two are my highest preference, because, again, location, when somebody new comes to the area, or when you're trying to find something, to me, that is the best thing, that way you can find it. And to me, that is the best thing to find a location of a school.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Sheemaker?
Well, I agree with Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Furtinbaugh. I believe that with the area being called the Roberta Mill area, and has, you know, has a lot of connections to those roots, that that would be an appropriate name for the school, one of those three. But I would probably lean towards the Roberta Mill School, Middle School.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Grimsley, go ahead.
By default, I agree with all of those comments, and think that area, I would really like to know what the address is going to be as well. I think that really is important, and by default with those names, I guess those top three make the most sense to me, so that's the ones I would be most leaning towards.
Ms. Blackwell?
I mean, you know I'm going to like number 10, but I tend to agree with you guys as well, as far as being able to find these schools. It always helps when there is a, when the road name is incorporated in that for me as well. You know, I do, I would love to be much more exciting and pick Schoolie McSchoolface or someone, whoever submitted that, that's fantastic. But no, I'm definitely good with anything that brings Roberta into it.
And Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, the Schoolie McSchoolface has cropped up in previous school namings, and I guess I just don't get the joke. I'm thinking of Mad Magazine or something, I'm not sure quite why that particular one keeps coming up. But no, we would honor the history and the development and cohesiveness of the culture around Roberta Road and Cochrane Road by going with some combination of the name Roberta for the school. Any of those various combinations, I think, would be very appropriate.
Thank you. I also like the history, so we will narrow it down to the three, and we'll make a decision next week. So we have Roberta Mill Middle School, Roberta Road Middle School, and Roberta Middle School. Is that correct? All right, so let's move on to our next item, which is legal, 6.02, Legal Services Contract. And this goes back to our other attorney that we had. We had suggested some edits to that contract for some different wording. Mr. Shaw, you want to clarify what that wording was? But we submitted that to the firm, and they've agreed to that. And we'll just put it into a form of amendment to the existing agreement.
That's great. It had been suggested that there be a minor amendment to their, to the Hartzell contract. It's obviously an outstanding firm, very active, and from time to time, some have felt that there was, wanted to make sure that there was no conflict of interest or any, anything that was uncomfortable in their relationship with the school system. They've always been very accommodating in dealing with that, but the thought was to put it in writing, that they're, just as the language states. And you said that they've talked with that.
They're acceptable with it.
Yeah, they've always been certainly wanting to avoid any kind of conflict at all.
Does this need a separate vote, or can it be on the consent agenda?
I think it can be on the consent agenda.
It could be consent agenda, yes.
I just thought it's pretty, like benign.
Okay, we're okay? Would that be, got thumbs up over on this side, thumbs up on this side? Okay, we will move that one on to consent agenda as well. Well, those are the, reaching the end of our agenda. You have 7.01, which is a call for motions that the meeting be adjourned. Need a motion and a second for that.
You got two here right here.
Motion by Ms. Furtinbaugh, second, by Ms. Blackwell. All in favor of adjourning our meeting tonight? Say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so we will say goodnight to our listening audience, and we will see you next week. Thank you.